Welcome everyone to Tuesday's GBA meeting, March 8th, 2022. My name is Marty Akins. I'm the chairman. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Himmel. And in fact, I'm sorry, Mr. Ray Dell is the vice chairman now. And we have four people tonight waiting on Mr. Chin. Going to be logging on, we hope, in a few minutes. He's tied up in a meeting somewhere. Is there anyone here from 49 Shea Street? Is anyone here? I don't see the lawyers logged in. If there's anyone here, Jonathan, if you can tell them how to raise their hand and go through that, please.
Sure, and this will apply to everybody if you're looking to speak tonight as well. Currently, everybody does not have the ability to unmute themselves. I have to give you that ability. So when the time comes to speak, I will send, excuse me, if you would like to speak, use the reactions button, give us a thumbs up, a virtual hand raise, wave on the screen. The chat is only enabled to myself, so you can't chat back and forth with people or the board members. So if you get in trouble with not being able to get on, send me a chat. Last case, just turn on your screen, give us a wave. So if anybody from 49 Shea Street is here, go ahead and use that virtual hand raise or give us a wave on screen.
Second call, 49 Shea Street.
Also, sorry, Marty. If you're calling it on a phone, it would be star nine to get our attention.
Is the counselor here?
Counselor is up.
Arnie K.
Not on? All right. Mr. O'Brien, can we make a motion to continue this till, let me give you a date. May 24th.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 21-71, Attorney Patrick Foley for variance to demolish the existing single-family home and build a new two-family townhouse-style home on the premises numbered 49 Shea Street Quincy. I make a motion to continue this case till May 12th. Is that correct?
24th.
24th?
May 10th. I'm sorry, May 10th.
May 10th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Under new business, Caitlin and Barry King, Robin T. King, for a special permit floodplain variance to construct a second story on the existing garage and create a third unit on the premise number 122 Hampden Circle. Is the applicant a representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Edward Fleming on behalf of Caitlin and Robin King. As you indicated, the property is at 122 Hampden Circle in Wallaston. It's located in a residence B zoning district. Caitlin and Robin both live in the home. They live on the second floor of the premises. It's a two-family at 122 Hampden Circle. Property is about a 4,549 square foot parcel. It's improved by a pre-existing non-conforming two-family house and a single-story garage in the rear of the site. As I indicated, it's located in a residence B district. Many of the area are also two-family. The applicant is proposing to reconstruct the garage in the rear of the premises and build a second floor on the garage for an additional unit in the premises. That unit is being built for Caitlin's sister. She intends to reside in that. And the proposal is for a modest, very modestly sized second story of that garage to provide for basically a one-bedroom unit with kitchen and small living area and full bath. The entire structure will be rebuilt so that it can comply with the building code requirements for window openings and allow them to place windows in the units to open up and provide air and light for that particular residential unit.
Mr. Fleming, excuse me, I gotta stop you. I just realized something. There's only four of us online right now, so I have to go through this list. I'm sorry. It just dawned on me. Keep thinking he was gonna be on. Everyone just listen up here. There's four of us on here tonight. I don't know if he's gonna get stuck in a meeting too long or... We can only go what we have here. There's four people. So if you're looking for a variance, you have to have all four people. If you're looking for a finding, you have to have three peoples, so you could lose one of us. So anyone that's on here tonight, I'm gonna give you a chance to wait until a fifth person comes. I'll put you right on the beginning of the agenda at the next meeting. Now go case by case. Just let me know what you want to do. If you want to continue to go tonight, or you'd rather wait until there's five people. Mr. Fleming?
Yes, we'd like to move forward. And so the proposal will, the garage in the rear of the site will be similar in height as the existing single-family home, be about 22 feet in total height. It will provide for two-car parking on the first level with a living level above. We'll have an interior and exterior staircase that will provide two means of egress for the residential unit. It requires both a floodplain special permit, a finding to modify and expand the existing non-conforming nature of the property and the variance to allow the third unit. The applicant has shared this with Counselor Phelan, Ward 5 City Counselor. They attended a neighborhood meeting and shared these plans with the neighbors that attended. There was general support for the proposal, no opposition. My client again spoke with Counselor Phelan earlier today, and Counselor Phelan indicated that he had not received any input at all from the neighbors opposed to this proposal, and he was generally favorable towards the proposal. As I indicated, this is a home, this is a residence of the applicants, and they intend to build this additional unit for a family member and continue to live in the property themselves. It gives them an opportunity to not only provide housing for family, but also to have some rental income coming in from the first-floor unit. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's essentially our applicant's presentation. I can certainly share my screen if necessary, although I know that the board has the plans in front of them. But that's our presentation for tonight. I believe that Caitlin, Barry, and Robin are also on the line as well today.
Counselor, on that, you have one driveway. You're saying you got two cars underneath, and you have two other units there. Where do they park?
Well, we believe that we have parking within the garage itself for two vehicles that provides access to the driveway independently for each vehicle, and then...
How do you, you gotta switch and swap. I mean, you got another unit there, you got another unit up parked, and there's no place to park. I just think that you've got, you know, 4,500 square feet, and I'm not taking away from you. This is just me. That, they're not gonna live there for 100 years of, I don't know how long. They could live there five years and just leave. Now we got three units on a place with one driveway. It's, to me, it's like, it's... My, and you're asking way too much for that piece of property. That's just my opinion, and I don't know, that's my questions, and I wouldn't be in favor of putting a third unit in there because I know that she's gonna live there now, but three years, five years, 10 years, and now you get three units on one driveway. It's just, to me, it's just a little too much, you know?
I don't think it's much...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. So Brian, any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I think our recent history is that we've refused to allow units to be put on top of garages and considered second buildings within single properties. So I'd have a hard time approving this at all.
Mr. Himmel?
On top of it, it's ugly as sin. It looks like a big chicken coop.
I think it resembles the character of the existing house that was not only, not built by my clients, but purchased by my clients, and they tried to make this fit within the existing structure.
And I understand why they want it. I really do, and I feel for them, but people don't live in houses all the time. They end up moving, they get divorced, families happen, someone moves, someone gets a job in California, they move. And then city owns three units with one driveway. That's my big problem. So, Mr. Ray Dell, I know you had an operation. If you don't want to speak, that's fine, but anything to comment?
I agree with the board.
Thank you. So I don't know, Mr. Fleming, what you want to do. You want to withdraw it, or you want to vote on it? It's up to you.
I would like to have the opportunity to withdraw and talk with my clients about, you know, how they want to move forward in the future if they want to pursue this any further.
All right. So Brian, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 21-54, Caitlin M. Barry King and Robin T. King for a special permit floodplain variance to construct a second story in an existing garage to create a third unit on the premises numbered 122 Hampden Circle Quincy. I make a motion to allow the parties to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN, Madam Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Yes. Brian Ray Dell?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Arnie K.
Yes. Sorry, Counsel. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Further under...
Marty, I did just hear from Jeff. He thinks he'll be on in 10 minutes.
All right, thanks. All right. If anyone wants to go and wait for five, we can wait. We can take a 10-minute break, and we'll have our fifth guy. I know I don't like doing this, but I'd like to give the applicants everything that they... If you want to go ahead with four, that's fine, too. GBA 22-7, Patricia Fisher for variance to construct a 25-by-27 two-story, one-vehicle garage on a vacant lot to house a commercial vehicle, tools, and office on the premises numbered R3 Town Hill Street in Quincy. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, can you turn that up just a little so we can hear you?
Okay.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I was sitting back too far, I think.
Maybe. So we have four people right now. Would you rather wait till five, or you want to go through with four?
I think we'd like to go forward.
Okay, and let me ask the rest of the people while they're here, because he might even be on by then. Galvin Driscoll, 26 Clopley Street. Galvin Driscoll here? It's right there.
We would like to go forward as well.
Okay, good, and two more, I believe. 12 Elm Ave.
Nina Dow.
Dow right here, right? Right here. Would you like to go through tonight?
Who's the applicant for...
I got his...
Min.
Yo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're here.
You want to go forward tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Stratton in 15 Stoughton Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we will be moving forward with this.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's go back to...
Please, there's seven. Patricia?
Yeah, one minute. The lawyer's on. Why don't we look at Sarah Stratton, Counselor, since you're on? Why don't you, 15 Stoughton Street, Sarah Stratton for variance to subdivide the property on 15 Stoughton Street, combine the land and garage structure located at 15 into the parcel at 854 C Street. Counselor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here representing Sarah Stanton. And her husband, Tom Scott, were the owners of property at 854 C Street, which abuts the property at 15 Stoughton Street, which is in the rear of the site. Miss Stanton and her husband, Tom, own this, their property at 854 C Street as their principal residence. They've owned 15 to 19 Stoughton Street for a number of years as a rental property. The property at 15 to 19 Stoughton Street includes a house and a garage, and that garage actually abuts the 854 C Street parcel as well. Since my clients have owned 854 C Street in the both parcels, they've utilized the driveway for 854 C Street that provides parking off of 15 Stoughton Street, or off of Stoughton Street, I'm sorry. And they've utilized that parking or that driveway for years. What they're seeking to do today is simply split off or carve off the garage that's located on 15 Stoughton Street and combine it with the abutting parcel, which is their principal residence at 854 C Street. This will allow them to have a garage for their principal residence. So they intend to utilize the garage that's there today on Stoughton Street property, make it part of their 854 C Street parcel, change the entrance of that garage so that it faces 854 C Street, and be able to utilize that two-car garage as their, for their principal residence. This is a Residence A zoning district. They've approached and spoken with all of the neighbors about this proposal. It really makes a ton of sense for them to have better parking for their existing single-family home on 854 C Street. And furthermore, the parcel at 15 to 19 Stoughton Street is a large parcel of land that has a separate driveway that provides parking for the single-family house on that parcel. That lot will remain one parcel. Although it's shown as two parcels, it will remain as one parcel moving forward in the future. My clients have no intentions of subdividing that Stoughton Street parcel and creating and making it a two separate units or two separate homes. They're gonna maintain that as one parcel. So if the board were to consider this, this would allow them to utilize and maintain the garage for 854.
And 854 has the two spaces in the back, correct?
Yeah, already have two spaces in the back. They've actually been utilizing that area for years themselves. And they don't really have access, as you can see, Mr. Chairman, to driveway parking even from C Street, so it's easier to pull around and come in from Stoughton. So it makes sense. I've actually spoken, I spoke with Steve Mobin, who lives around the corner. Steve expressed his support for the proposal. I know that Sarah had a chance to talk to the counselor. He was also supportive of their proposal, and they've spoken with all their neighbors, and they have...
Yeah, he's on, he's on here tonight.
Yeah, and Counsel McCarthy's here tonight.
And I own a piece right down the street from there.
Yeah, it's a great proposal.
All right, is there any questions? I don't have any questions. I think it makes sense in, the other Stoughton Street has parking in the back, plenty of it. Mr. Ray Dell, any questions? No. Mr. O'Brien?
Could I just get clarification from Attorney Fleming? Did you say this is a two-car garage? Are you, they're gonna convert it to a two-car garage?
Sarah's here. Maybe she can speak to that. Sarah, Cara group travel.
It's just, it's a one-car garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And it's gonna regain a one-car garage?
I missed both, yeah, sorry about that.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First call. Second call, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Fleming. Yeah, it's pretty cut and dry, Mr. Chairman. I went down and spent about an hour or so with Sarah and her husband, Tom, and took a look at that. Of course, they're on C Street if you don't have a driveway on C Street. Thank God you got a driveway on Stoughton.
So the extension of the backyard becoming one parcel and pretty much stays on the same
footprint is a no-brainer, I think, and I fully support it.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you for your time. Anyone else? Last call. All our party hearing closed. I have a letter here from the GTW. 311, 2022, 15 Stoughton Street, case number GBA 2211. We reviewed this middle area by reference project, and we have no comments. Need anything further needed, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call. Second call. Third call.
No hands, Mr. Chairman.
Third call. All our party hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor in what I've heard from everyone, I think you are. Mr. O'Brien, could I make a motion, please?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, regarding case 22-11, Sarah Stanton for variance to subdivide the property at 15 Stoughton Street and combine the land and garage structure located at 15 into the parcel at 854 C Street on the premises numbered 15 Stoughton Street Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested variance.
Brian Ray Dell?
Yeah. Second in.
Second.
All right. On the motion, CNN, Madam Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Brian Ray Dell?
Yeah.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Arnie K.
Yes. Thank you, Counsel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
That goes with Shea Street in the folder. Thank you. Another one that's in tonight's agenda, not back yet. Before we get into that property, like, if we can find guys here, I'd rather have...
He's here. Jeffrey's in.
Jeff, Jeff. All right, everyone, here's Jeff Franco. He's a board member. He just signed in for us. Let's go back to the beginning here, by one, five guys. GBA 22-7, Patricia Fisher for variance to construct a 25-foot-by-27 two-story, one-vehicle garage on this vacant lot to house a commercial vehicle, tools, and an office on the premise number R13 Town Hill Street. Patricia, is there someone here? Jeff, you're a lawyer, right?
I am.
All right, could you please, you know, please?
Raise your right hand, please. I swear that I can't see it if it's up. You swear the testimony, swear that the testimony that you give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So up, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, Patricia, if you could get, please come up closer so everyone can... Thank you. Speak louder, something, I don't know what it is. You're up. You have the floor. Why don't you explain what you want to do?
My client is William Kennedy of Kennedy Carpentry.
And anyone, anyone having trouble here?
Are you able to turn up your microphone volume? You're very muffled on our end.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry about that.
No, no, no. Crank it up. We'll get there.
You're good.
We got time.
What is this? Opened up something else instead.
Why don't we try? See where we are. Want to try that?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're gonna have to yell a little on your end, but we'll get it.
Okay. Normally have help from one of my children, but I'm quarantining in my office because I have coronavirus right now. So I'm trying to do this on my own.
If you stand right there, you got it.
Want to get a mask?
Don't move. There you go.
My client is William Kennedy of Kennedy Carpentry.
All right, try backing up just a bit, because it is muffling, just a little, right there.
Okay.
There you go.
William Kennedy Carpentry. He owns property on Copeland Street. This lot, R13 Town Hill Street, is on the other side of a private way from the property he owns on Copeland Street. He's going to be selling the Copeland Street building and lot because he is getting ready to retire, and he wants to downsize. Like to move his operation out of that building and off that lot into this small 25-by-27-foot garage building. The lot, R13 Town Hill Street, is not accessed from Town Hill Street. You can't get to it. It's about 20 feet below the elevation of Town Hill Street.
Right.
It's only accessed from the private way. The private way, which I don't think has a name, is, yeah, it's a mix of multi-family apartment complexes and industrial buildings.
Right.
So there's really not much on the street that this building is going to interfere with or hurt the value of. It's not a public safety issue or anything like that. About two years ago, this board approved the construction of another garage on the lot directly adjacent to the left of Mr. Kennedy's lot. That was for Bob Pierce, and Bob Pierce is here in the meeting, and he's in support of this project also. What Mr. Kennedy would like, is asking for is approval to put in a two-car, a two-story garage on this lot, which is a rez B lot. Two stories would not be allowed. We also would like to go slightly higher than the allowed height and be closer to the lot lines than would typically be allowed. What he's going to do with this building is he's going to house one commercial vehicle, his carpentry truck, a lot of ladders, and miscellaneous tools. Then on the second floor, he'd like to have a small office.
What's the office? I don't see nothing here. Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, there should be a second floor plan there. It's going to be a flat roof to help mitigate the height problem.
All right. Can't even read this without my glasses. Skylight, so, all right. What is he having on the second floor? What's gonna be up on there?
The second floor is simply going to be his private office.
Including what?
Just a desk.
No baths?
There's a bathroom on the first floor.
Yeah, but there's not gonna be a bath, like a bath bath. It's just a restroom.
There's a, there's a single-user, handicapped-accessible toilet room with a toilet and a sink, grab bars, et cetera, and that's on the first floor.
And that's it?
Yes.
The only thing that's gonna be in that building. So the second floor, no one could live in there?
No.
No. I mean, that was my main concern, that turns into a living quarter somewhere. So the first floor is where the restroom will be, okay.
Yes.
And there'll be no plumbing upstairs whatsoever.
No. Well, Mr. Kennedy doesn't really even want the half bathroom. Mr. Kennedy doesn't even require the half bathroom. He doesn't, he isn't going to be there enough, but I don't think the building code will allow us to create a structure without a bathroom in it.
And that's all I wanted, was a bathroom.
Right, exactly.
I just don't want, all of a sudden, this turns into something it shouldn't be.
No, no.
I saw the piece of property, and that's what that street is. It's just garages. The whole street is all garages. The only way you get in is coming around off of Town Hill down the school street there, whatever that school is. I've got a blank here. That school right there. It's a middle school, I know. It used to be Sterling, Sterling. Yeah.
Look from granted street to this private way.
That's Stan, that's, yeah, Sterling, Sterling, right. Come down there and you can get on that road. Uh, no, those are the questions that I have. Uh, Mr. Rydell, any questions?
No.
No. Mr. O'Brien?
All right, I just, just for clarification, um, Mr. Mr. Kennedy owns the building in front on, um, Copeland Street. He doesn't, he does not own the building on Townhill 13.
Well, he does own the land. There's no building on.
No, but I mean the, the building above, which is on Townhill. He doesn't own that.
He does not.
Okay. Um, and what he wants to do is he's going to sell the building on Copeland, and he's going to move his operation into this building if it's approved.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
No questions. Okay, uh.
Mr. Franco.
No questions. I'm just here to swear people in.
Glad you made it, brother.
No, no questions.
Glad you made it. I know, I'm getting confused here. Really, what happened here? I was looking for Mr. Chin. He's not here yet. I'm going, where is he?
Not a familiar face.
Whoa!
Uh, that's it. I'll, I'll see you tomorrow. I'll see you tomorrow night at North Quincy. We'll discuss that.
Not outside, please, not outside. Oh, jeez. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor? First call, oh, uh, Beth Ann, could you take an oath, please?
Hands up.
Open up that microphone.
Yes.
And Mr. Franco, could you swear in, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony you'll give before this board will be true and accurate, the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I just, I'm Beth Ann Strollo. I'm the CEO of Quincy Community Action Programs, and I just want to express support for the Kennedys project. We actually, uh, QCAP actually has bought the building, uh, on 18 Copeland Street, um, and we are the immediate abutter to the piece of property that's, um, up for review here, and we are fully supportive of this project, and uh, I want to just express our, um, uh, uh, support for the Kennedys and how, uh, community-minded that they are and how positive, uh, our relationship has been working together since we began the transaction to uh, acquire the building on 18 Copeland Street. Um, so we have no concerns as the, I think we're probably one of the closer abutters to this property and are fully supportive of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Jonathan, anything?
Um, I'm having some internet issues on my end. I'm not sure if you're, I can't see anybody's pictures. I don't know if you're seeing any waving, but I'm not seeing any virtual hands.
No, I don't see anything. I don't see anything on, uh.
There was a letter of support that was written.
Wait a minute, I got a letter of proposal here first, so hold on. I don't have a letter of support. And who is that from?
Um, Bob Pierce, the adjacent abutter. He wrote a letter of support.
Was it an email? Or was it a?
No, it was, it was mailed, uh, to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
And it was put into the file.
Not in my file. It's just in your file. This is a post that you wrote on the top of the post. I don't know. This is Jennifer Brobeck, 102 Townhill Street.
That's the only one I have.
All right. No, it's not here. All right, third call. Call up out of hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. We February 16, 2022, R13 Townhill Street, case number ZBA 227. We have reviewed this middle for the above reference com, project, have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? I have a letter here that, that I'm just, I'm not reading this whole thing. This is, this is like really tall paragraphs. But anyway, I'm going to get to the gist of it. It's, 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 she's opposed. I've seen FedEx and other large delivery trucks have to turn around in my driveway and strike, strike a car so they can drive down the street the wrong way because they can't get by due to the illegal parking, illegal parking issues. There are large tractor trailer trucks history garden a one-way sign and driving too fast down the street. I don't know what that's got to do with this project, but anyway, uh, during rush hour, the street is used as a cup food despite children being outside playing on numerous large potholes. I mean, she goes on and on. It's about, it's about parking and driving and, you know, uh, says the property on Copeland Street, never took care of the property, and once again, the sidewalks are being taken over. Well, and that's Jennifer Brobeck, 102 Townhill Street, sent from my iPhone. Uh, we'll put that in the proposal. She's opposed. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call? First call? Second call?
Not seeing any.
Third call? A call up out of hearing closed. You know, I went down there and looked at first, I'm reading this and I'm going, this is like, this don't seem right, and it seems like too much for that area. And then I went and looked and saw the place he has down there and the height and what he's doing. And he's got all that granite down there. One more question. What's he going to do? Build a wall with that granite block? Is that going to go all the way back?
I, I, I don't know anything about the granite.
Mr. Kennedy? If you, if you just got a minute, I want to ask you a few things. Jonathan, could you, could you unmute them?
You have to unmute yourself.
You gotta unmute yourself now.
We became the host. Jonathan's got the tip.
Oh, okay.
What to do is just ask for a mute?
I did. I already did it once. Try that. There you go.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Have they been sworn in?
Yeah, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Both raise your hand, right hand, please. Uh, swear the testimony given before this board will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
William Kennedy.
Ann Kennedy.
Address?
We live at 11 Santa Cruz Road, Canton, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, all those, all those bricks, I mean, those big granite blocks out there, are you building that along that?
No, they're, they're going to be, they're going to be taken out of there, but we will be doing repairs to the back wall.
Yeah, the back wall needs repairs, you know. I could see in this, further down, not your property. I don't know who owns that, but it's really disgusting, really gross, and I'm going to call the counselor and have him start writing tickets to down there because that, that, it's crashed there. There's, there's, I don't know if people are throwing stuff there, but it's really, it's, it's, it's a sin to have that in our city when I drove down that street.
I, I think this is one of the things that I'm going to actually end up taking care of myself because I, I think it's land of Norfolk's aboard. I don't know who owns that land. It's been, it's been like that for the last, it's probably part of the easement, and it just got built up over time, and the trees and shrubs just overgrew there. But my plan is, is when I do do, if I get permission to do this building, is actually to landscape that and put some mulch and cut back those trees and probably put it through shrubs there, and I think it, it will clean up the whole area.
Yeah, because it, it's almost like TVs, there's TVs there and all the refrigerator. It's, it's really, it's mind-blowing.
Correct, correct.
Someone could even, I don't know, and it looks like someone threw it off wherever, I don't know.
Yeah, yes. You're absolutely right, but I think once we, once I get my hands on that area, I can, I can clean all that place up.
Yeah, if you could clean that all up, no one's going to dump because then they're going to say they're going to get caught.
Correct.
EB, you know, people have cameras on their building.
Well, that's my plan. That's my plan to have a camera on that building so it can kind of cover all that area.
Right, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
I'll be voting in favor because I saw the way, way that, that is, and, and right down there is all, all commercial property. Uh, and, and there is a street to drive down there, and he's not using it to live in it or anything like that. It's just to put his commercial truck in there, uh, or rental later on, you know, uh, so if he rents, I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Rydell, any question, comments? All set?
He's muted.
I'm muted. I don't know how you did, but how's that?
I am, I muted. I'm good.
Okay, uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, do, do you want a condition of the, um, of the, of the variance that, um, that we know?
On the second floor.
No facilities on the second floor, no water?
No water on the second floor and no, no bathroom, no, no tub in the building, shower or tub. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Hamel?
Agreed. Good idea. Clean it up.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Uh, do you have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 26-12.
What?
Um, I'm sorry, my mistake. 22-7.
There you go.
Patricia J. Fisher for a variance to construct a 25 by 27 two-story one-vehicle garage on this vacant land to house a commercial vehicle, tools and office on the premises numbered R13 Townhill Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance with the following conditions, that there be no plumbing or, uh, bathroom, um, a bathtub or a shower installed at the site.
On the sec, okay, good.
No, no, we have to have a bathroom.
No, he's going to have a bathroom downstairs. Shower, shower, bath in a.
Bathtub or a shower.
No shower, just a bath. No shower or tub. Uh, is that seconded?
Seconded.
On the motion, seeing anything? Adam Clark, can I have a voice vote?
Yeah. Brian Rydell?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Jeff Franco?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes. Further on to tonight's new business, ZBA 229, Gavin, Gavin, Gavin Driscoll for finding to enclose the existing front porch and premises. Is the, uh, captain or representative here?
Good evening. Yes, I'm here.
All right, could you raise your right hand, please?
Yeah.
You swear that the testimony given before this board tonight will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Gavin Driscoll, business address of 180 Allen Street, Grand Tree House.
Thank you.
All right, you have the floor. You want to tell us what you want to do?
Yes, uh, we're looking to enclose an existing sunroom, um, and there since the house was built, and the footprint of the building isn't changing at all. All we're looking to do is just enclose the front sunroom and add um, a new front door and some windows in the front there.
All right, hold on one minute. I'm having something on here. Okay, great. Uh, so you're just going to enclose it? Is it going to be just the sunroom there? Is it going to be a all-season twenty, you know, uh, is it a three-season porch?
Yeah, three-season porch, correct, yep.
No heat and nothing, okay. All right, I have no questions. Uh, Mr. O'Brien? I was, oh, that was Mr. Conveyors.
Yeah.
Mr. Conveyors hated though. I did too, though. I do. I, I did this. Uh, sometimes you got beautiful oak, everything gorgeous, and then just going to put it in. Oh, my God. Uh, where am I? Uh, vice chairman, any questions? Mr. O'Brien?
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor?
Forgot me again, Marty.
Oh, Mr. Franco. Mr. Franco, any questions, Mr. Franco?
No questions.
You told me you were just here to swear them in. I believed you.
As long, as long as we are not on the no screening in, screened in port, no finishing screened-in porch program, I'm fine.
Okay. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second, I can't believe I did that twice.
You're very right.
At least I'm consistent. I keep making the same mistakes. I can tell you, yeah. Uh, third call? I don't see anybody. I don't see no hands. Call up out of hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. Says, uh, I make in February 16, 2022, 26 Copley Street. Case number ZBA 2229, we reviewed this middle in the above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? What did I do here? Unmute? Unmute. How's that? Are you all right now? Charlie?
I'm good now.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I don't know how that happened, right? I know when he went out, something happened to his technical, and we're running it here now, so we'll get back to it. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Don't see any. Third call? Call up out of hearing closed. Uh, I'm going to be voting in favor. Any comments, uh, Mr. Rydell?
I've done.
Done. Mr. O'Brien?
I'm good.
Uh, Mr. Hamel?
In favor.
Mr. Franco?
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Chairman, regarding case 22-9, Gavin, Gavin Driscoll for a finding to enclose the existing front porch on the premises numbered 26 Copley Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested finding. Second.
On the motion, CNN, Adam Clark, can I have a vote?
Brian Rydell?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yep.
Jeff Franco?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Harvey Niget?
Yes. Last case tonight, ZBA 2210. Min, I don't know how to pronounce the last name. Anyone help me with this one? Sal, I think, okay. For finding to convert the existing front porch to an enclosed sunroom on the premise number 12 Elm Street. The Afghan representative, there we are, uh, Mr. Franco, I'm going to unmute him. Mr. Franco, can you please with him and, he'll sit now? Can you hear us? Yep, okay.
Could you please raise your right hands?
Right, right.
Other hands up. I can't see them.
Yep.
Yeah, they're up.
Is it, will the testimony given tonight before this board be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Immunity.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I gotta unmute him. Unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Kaian Lee. I'm the, I'm the husband.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's your name, man?
Ming Xiao.
Okay. Address?
Xiao, M, A, V, U, Quincy.
Okay.
You can put your hands down now. Thank you.
All right, you're all set. Why don't, why don't you tell us what you want to do with the porch? What do you want to do with your front porch? I don't know how this is doing this. I just did it. Go ahead.
They're muting themselves by accident, Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear, hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. We're all set.
Okay, we, we have a front porch. Uh, we, we like to, uh, enclose the front porch as a sunroom because we have a gas station behind our building, uh, we can smell, smell the gas every day. And on the, on the driveway, the left side, we have a restaurant, so we can smell that cooking smell every day, you know, and also.
Hungry all day?
Yeah, right. That's right. Okay. Um, I, I know the food is good. I know that. And we have, we also, yeah, have a washing laundry because they dry the clothes, also merely the smell came to our yard. So, and in the summer, in the summer, we, they have, they have done a lot of dumpster.
Rice, rice everywhere.
Uh, on the walkway, dumpster next to the driveway, so there's a lot of fries fried to our yard. So we, we needed sunroom for our health life, you know.
All right, are you going to, are you going to enclose this permanently? Be a three-season porch? You're going to put heat out there? You're going to close and box it right in?
No, no need heat, just need the sun, just need.
Just windows with screens?
Yeah, it's windows. Yeah, windows, yeah.
Windows and screens?
Yes.
So you can still, okay, I hear what you're saying.
So we can sit inside, you know, in the winter.
Without the fries.
Yeah.
In the winter, it'll be all chilly out there, no?
It's, that's, that's the same thing.
Yeah, we can.
Summer, all, all fries, you know, it's crazy. If you come to our building in the summer every day, you'll see a lot of fries fried all, all over it. It's like.
All right, I believe you. I believe you.
Thank you.
I'll never get that picture out of my head now, for a while. Any questions? I have no questions.
No question.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call. Oh, excuse me. Right now, Mr. Chin is here, hello, Mr. Chin?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
The board member, glad he's here with us.
Apologize for being late.
No, no, that's fine, we understand. Mr. Chin, do you know Mr. Frankel? I'm not Mr. Frankel.
I believe I've seen him before.
Think I've seen him before, I know, I'm saying.
Can't be certain, no.
See what happens when you miss a meeting? Everyone gets in your case, right? One meeting, damn.
I hear you, you can't remember me five minutes apart, so it's...
Two minutes, what are you talking about? What's your name, anyway? You look familiar. All right, let's get back to this. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? No. No, no, second call, third call, no. I have a letter here from the DPW. February 16, 2022, 12 Elm Street, case number ZBA 2210. "We have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. If there's anything further, please advise." Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Audience is dwelling. Second call? Third call? Call up out of hearing closed. Mr. O'Brien, any comments? Mr. Frankel, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Himmel?
It may be the best reason to do a closed imports that I've heard in all my time here.
Mr. Conveyors is crying somewhere.
He's probably, he's probably, see this guy down here says Mary, that's him. Still listening.
It's like everyone knew he left.
Oh, boy, the poor guy, I gotta go down and see him this weekend. Any comments, Mr. Himmel?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 22-10, Min Zhao, for a finding to convert the existing front porch into an enclosed sunroom on the premises numbered 12 Elm Ave, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested finding.
Second. On the motion? Saying none, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yeah. Ryan Ray Dell?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yeah.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Ron Himmel?
Yes.
Yes. Guys, that concludes our meeting, you're all set.